Welcome everyone for today's regular scheduled meeting for Thursday, March sixth, two thousand and twenty five. And it is six thirty-three P M. Roll call please.
Mayor Alma Beltron.
Present.
Mayor Pro Temp Sabrina Rodriguez.
Present.
Councilmember Winita Molina.
Present.
Councilmember Diego Garza.
Present.
Councilmember Kathy Solorio.
Present.
Um, Treasurer Ishmael Spandola.
Present.
Please rise for the flag salute.
My allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all.
Okay, so um, Serta, do we have any additions or deletions at this time?
Yes, I wanted to uh really briefly introduce our new finance director.
Okay.
And uh so she came on, uh it's probably been about a week, so she's getting a fill for it. But Myra Escobedo is our new finance director we just brought on, so if we could uh, do you wanna say anything?
There we go. See, you can tell it's my first time. I just wanna thank you all for giving me the opportunity and I'm looking forward to working with all of you. Thank you.
We're excited to have you onboard. Thank you so much. Okay, thank you chief for that. And so uh we have any no presentations or informational, any public comments at this time? Okay, um then we'll, and then, okay, go ahead.
Hi, my name is Laura. I'm a resident of Parlier and I'm here to introduce to you guys the new coaching staff for our um Parlier softball team, the Sen Cal Panthers. So I'll let them introduce each other. We will call Anna up. Come on Anna. And they'll introduce themselves and Coach Mark has some um suggestions for that, to improve that field.
Hi. Good evening. Um, you know, first of all, I just wanna say thank you uh to the city of Parlier. Um, the last time I was here, you know, we talked about um, you know, the Sen Cal Panthers using the facilities at Veterans Park. Uh, so really appreciate that. Um, you know, the coaches are gonna just talk a little bit about, you know, um, just what we need, you know, to uh improve the fields and stuff. But um since we last met, uh last time we were here, you know, um, it was just a fourteen U team. Now we've expanded to have a fourteen U and a twelve U team. Um, these girls, you know, have been working really hard. Um, I don't know if you guys heard too, like, you know, the majority of the girls, which were in seventh grade last year, they took championship at the junior high level. Um, you know, so they're really, you know, um, getting really good. We're looking at joining um higher caliber um tournaments now, so that's one of our goals. Um, and these girls are just doing so well that we are starting to get recognized by, you know, other, other teams, other communities. Um, you know, and these girls are putting Parlier in the map. Um, so one thing I I would like to ask is, you know, if you guys can help us with the facilities because there's teams that are reaching out to us and want to come and play. And, you know, we wanna be able to represent and have, you know, a field that we can be proud of, um, and that's gonna be safe for the girls to play at. So um, you know, and that also give us opportunities to open up a snack bar for fundraising and stuff like that. So um, yes, wanna keep that in mind and just again, wanna say thank you guys for, um, you know, allowing these girls to have something to do and, you know, stay out of trouble and um, you know, helping with their future. So, thank you.
Thank you. I think it's really, we wanna thank you for actually doing that for the girls because I know there's a lot of sports for boys and there's only cheerleading for for the girls right now. And I think they have a few more things where it's volleyball now that they're actually implementing. But one of the, this league is one of the ones that my daughter used to be part of uh way back then. So I, I really do appreciate what you're doing because um you're helping the kids getting involved into sports and it's really important for them to be uh involved in the sport. So, you know, I know that when Laura used to have it at that time is when my uh daughter was involved in the sport. So we all know that it's important to get our, get our kids, you know, involved and have them active in sports because it's only not only keeps them out of trouble, but also has the opportunity for the future in going into high school for scholarships that they can attend in college and gives them more uh a future for, for them to be able to be more successful. So I wanna thank you for that. Um, Bertha, you can arrange, maybe you can meet with Bertha and uh see what days you're gonna be out there and um we can work on uh having that field safe for the kids. We don't want no injuries for the kids. I'm sure that the council will agree to that, that, you know, most of them are part of sports, you know, have been involved in sports. So I think um if you can, you do that. And is there any other questions or comments from the council?
Again, like Mary said, uh, thank you for donating your time. Um, I've done it. I know Diego's done it. Um, giving back and preparing the girls. It's a stepping stone to get to high school, possibly college ball. Um, but thank you for putting your time and effort into that. And when Laura started it here, I mean, there, the girls are already in high school. Um, so again, thank you and preparing those girls to play at Parler High School.
Thank you. And I just wanna pass the mic on to Mark. He's the head coach for our twelve U.
Hi there. First of all, I just wanna say, oh, I'm Mark, um, coach of the twelve U. Um, also helped out with the fourteen U as well. Just wanna thank you for taking the time for hearing us out today and, you know, thank you, like, you know, my fellow coach Anna said is just for letting us use the facilities and fields, like, we appreciate it. Um, I'm gonna be honest with you, I'm, I'm not a resident of Parlier, I'm from Sanger, but I take more proud in your city than I do in mine. And, you know, it does say a lot because coming from Sanger, I coached there as well and stuff like that. And it's just, you know, they don't provide as much support as, you know, your city has provided for our girls and, you know, just for me and my family as well. So um, thank you on that. Um, you know, first of all, I, I kinda get emotional just talking about my girls 'cause, you know, uh, when I first started this journey, they're about nine, ten years old. And, you know, when I first came in and stuff like that, it was just Coach Anna doing it by herself. Of course, you know, Laura passed the torch 'cause she got injured and things like that. So she passed the torch to Coach Anna and she was just doing it by herself. So when I came over, you know, it was, you know, I'm gonna tell you why you wanna invest in these girls. Um, you know, their perseverance, their personalities. These are the girls that are gonna bring you a Valley championship one day and mark my words, they will. They're the, they're the girls that are putting this, you know, like I said, the city on the map by what they're doing. Um, and why I say perseverance is because when I first came onboard, they, they weren't the best group. They weren't winning as much games and stuff like that. Fast forward three years later, we're coming off back-to-back championships from tournaments. Where we went to a bigger tournament NSA function, we just went three and O. And everybody was scared of us facing us the next day. They're lucky it got rained out because these girls were about to show out, I guarantee it. Um, but not only that, these are the type of girls that give back to their community. So any events that, you know, we could be a part of, parades, giving back to the community, um, you know, sign us up 'cause we'll be there. Um, these are the girls that are gonna come back and coach the future girls of this team. They, you know, this is not just them, they just wanna keep this going for them. They have younger sisters that, you know, babies that wanna be a part of this. And it's not just, I mean, even that, it's drawing attention from everywhere. Um, you know, I have girls on my team, literally two of them come from Fresno, two of them come from Breedley. I have three of them coming from Hanford just to play in our city. And I say our city 'cause, you know, they welcome me into their family, so, you know, I say our city proudly. So that's why I just, you know, it would just, right now, the issues that are going on right now is there's a water leakage, I believe, in left field. Um, where we have to avoid that whole side, so we really can't get the work that we need done. So, um, and then there's water pipes broken behind the field. Um, there's lights are out and these just kinda create hazards for our team and stuff like that. Um, so we're just asking just for like a little help in that category. But like I said, these girls are just, trust me, if you go watch them play, and I recommend that you do, that you'll fall in love just like I did. And, you know, they're amazing group of girls and I guarantee, like, I mean, even the whole highest of standards, like, I have some that are missing practices and things like that, but it's for reasons because they're getting school awards. It's for reasons because they have to go to leadership things for their school in seventh and eighth grade. So, you know, this is our future and I just, you know, like I said, it's just, it's a great investment. So just please, you know, just think about that and, you know, that's, you know, kinda all I wanna say is just kinda give you background on that. Just, you know, like I said, just, you'll fall in love with these girls if you get to see them play.
Oh, well, we, we will eventually get to see them. And I wanna thank you again. Um, Bertha will look into that um with Serta. Serta will make sure that, because we don't want a uh situation to happen where they can get injured. But one thing that I want to just add is how many times did we have students from here from Parlier go to other cities to, to play? And now we have others wanting to come here.
Exactly.
That is the difference. So that says a lot about your team, about your league of what you're doing. So if they're wanting to come here, that shows that you're, you're doing a great job. So uh Bertha, can you um just make sure, I don't know if you can reach out to, who, does she have your contact information? And then we'll make sure that that's um fixed.
I just wanna say thank you to all of you. I mean, I know when you started it, it was been a while already. So um, thank you for continuing it and um, one of my best friends, uh Nice plays on your team and he was just telling me how great it is as also and how you did come off of the two championships. So congratulations. I appreciate you guys.
Oh, we appreciate you. Thank you so much. And just, like I said, thank you for your time.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you.
Oh, sorry. And just myself, um, I'm, I'm Mark Macias. I'm, I'm the senior here on, on that. But I, I assist both uh Coach Mark and Coach Anna as well too, uh with both teams on that. And it was actually both teams, the twelve U and the fourteen U's that won the back-to-back championships on, on those. So they both won in regards to that. So that was a great accomplishment. Uh, but one of the things we wanna talk about, 'cause you talked about getting more girls involved, he does have a vision for that as well too, and talk about a little bit about what you wanna do with the.
I mean, getting more girls involved and envisioning and stuff like that is, you know, like with the field access and things like that. I wanna hold free clinics for Parlier and, like I said, really get these girls involved, not just, you know, for our travel team and stuff like that. I would like to host from ages, hopefully eight on all the way up to high school just to get some work in. So that way, you know, on their off days, they wanna work. And like I said, when it comes game day for their league championships or their leagues, you know, we're ready to go. So, you know, that's something I envision that I wanna give back to the city for, like I said, everything you guys do for us. So, you know, like I said, free clinics for the girls, like, you know, for.
You know, um, maybe, uh, don't we have a um, the coordinator, that sports coordinator that maybe he can work that and have a, a, a recreation? And do the, the uh sports clinic that you're talking about and we, she will present it to the council and we can schedule the dates, whatever days work out for you guys. So that way.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, on the off turn, or on the off days where we have, don't have tournaments and stuff like that. Like I said, a week where we could go out and have that, you know, from ten to two o'clock, please come out and, you know, you know, not, you don't have to be, have any skills of, of right now, like, you know, we all wanna get work, we all wanna build together. And that's what our vision is, is we just wanna help grow this program, help grow the city in any ways that we can. So.
Of course, absolutely. So we will look forward to that. Thank you very much.
So, I just wanna say thank you to all of you for what you guys are doing for the children, not just for our city, but for the surrounding cities. And um, I love what you're saying 'cause it's true, it's starting with the small ones. By the time they get to being to the older uh teams, they already have the training. Uh, so that's a really good idea. I love that. It's really gonna help our children, like I said, not just ours, but the surrounding communities. So thank you for your great work.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I think we had another speaker. Go ahead.
Yes, I'd like to thank you guys also. Good job, great progress. And I think we will be looking into that field for safety reasons, okay? I'll make sure I'll be on top of that.
I think staff got it already. They, they ain't got to direct it. Go ahead and, and uh, and approach, approach the podium for your, whatever you're going to present. So this way, Bertha, make sure that you do contact Laura, whoever is in charge from that group. Thank you. Go ahead.
Hi, my name's Lorena Bettencourt and I don't live here now, but I work here. I went to school here. I have family that lives here. And I've done a lot of rescue of animals here in your city. I'm here today to express my concern about your animal shelter. I work with Second Chance Animal Rescue and on January first, we went to donate beds and tarps for the shelter. And quite honestly, I was horrified by what I saw at the shelter. The condition of the, that those poor dogs were in was really, really bad. Um, the day I pulled, that day, I pulled a dog that was badly malnourished. He was skin and bones and he was dying of parvo. Um, I just couldn't leave him there. So I took him and I took him to the vet the next day. Uh, we also pulled nine puppies that were in a small carrier just piled up on top of each other. There was no food and water in there and we don't know how long they were there. So we made the decision, um, asked the rescue to just pull them from there and um, you know, take over. Uh, Benny, the dog that I pulled, has since made a full recovery and he's now part of my family. He was a foster fail, so I couldn't let him go. Um, but there's a lot of dogs still there. That's why I'm here. I see some posts of the dogs that are picked up, but never of dogs that are available for adoption. It appears that you guys don't market them and there's no exposure to the public so that there's dog, those dogs don't have a chance to get adopted. I just, I'm wondering, are you guys working with any rescues? How many are they ever, 'cause they're never tagged in the post. And quite frankly, all the posts and comments that I'm seeing, when there is a post, are a lot of negative comments of the shelter and the conditions that the dogs are in. And again, like I said, I witnessed that firsthand. So that's one of my main concerns. Um, also, do you have any updates about the changes at the shelter? Are, are the heaters installed? Is the fence or the play area completed? Do the dogs get cleaned, fed and walked daily? Uh, when I went, the dogs had no food or water. There was no buckets, were empty. Um, are they out of the kennels daily? The condition of the dogs is not good and with no human interaction, they don't stand a chance. Um, I understand you pride yourself not to having euthanized any dogs in years, but is that really good when they're locked up twenty-four seven? We have to make the decision and sometimes unfortunately, decisions that none of us wanna make, but we have to see what's better for the animals. Um, I've met with your city manager before and expressed my concerns and shared some ideas. But now, um, I come to you to make you aware of what's happening at your shelter. I know that there's a crisis everywhere with abandoned dogs, but if you are committing to picking them up, you need to have a plan in place so that they have good living conditions and that they're taken care of and that they have a chance. I encourage you all to visit the shelter if you haven't done so. If you do, you will want to do more and do better with these animals. They don't deserve to be abandoned and locked up twenty-four seven. It's really concerning and I know firsthand, uh, like I said, I've been in rescue for a long time. It's everywhere. I get that. I, I'm advocating in my city also and I do as much as I can everywhere, not just here, not just Selma. I do it everywhere. Um, it's hard for us that are in rescue because, you know, we can't just let the animals go. We just can't, you know, go by and see them suffering. Um, but the conditions that I saw, the shelter, was terrible and really concerning to me. And I'm, like, I'm constantly bugging. I know I call um Officer Barcelos constantly. How's it going? What's going on over there? You know, again, I know I don't live here, but I'm here a lot and it, it's just, I'm advocating for the animals and I really, really encourage you guys to go. Uh, maybe you can partner up with the coaches and the girls to do a volunteer program. They can help socialize the dogs. If maybe you do an adoption event, they can help and volunteer their time also and that's giving back to the community. There's something, there's so many different things, so many different ways. And if those posts are just ongoing and you guys um share and tag shelters and, I'm sorry, rescues, that goes a long way. It's just, it's more exposure for the dogs. So please, please go and take a look and see what's going on. Please update the community, update the posts on what's going on with the shelter. And let's try to do better, please. Thank you.
Thank you. Have you um worked with Bambi's at all? Okay, and um are they collaborating with the city with you involved or?
I don't know that right now. I, I don't know who's collaborating with uh Parlier at this time. It's. Sorry. Um, no, I don't know what's going on right now with the shelter at Parlier. Um, that's why I'm here. Because I'm following the page and I'm trying to, I post comments like, hey, what's going on? I'm asking questions. I don't get any responses. There's nothing. I just recently saw yesterday and today, um, it looks like you guys picked up puppies. That's concerning to me because those puppies will not stand a chance at that shelter.
They're already, I, Michelle, even though Michelle's currently right now not here, she's actually at a conference out of, out of the state. So, uh, with the mosquito abatement. So um, she did contact me.
Okay.
Because she did see that post and she already has somebody else that's gonna work on, on getting them transported to Fresno so that they can go to Oregon. So they, they, they do stand a chance to, you know, survive and get an adoption going.
I've worked with Michelle in the past before and she's been great with the animals. I don't know, you know, how close you guys work with that rescue or how you guys collaborate. I don't know because nothing is being said, nothing is being posted. So the transparency um at the shelter is really important for the community and for us that do rescue. So we know what's happening and we know how to help. You know, I know we can't take them all in. I already have dogs at my house. I can't take more in, but I can do everything that, you know, in my power to help, whether it's with my resources, with um funds, anything, right? Donations, whatever we can and just market them and put the word out for people.
I, I agree that there needs to be more, because I don't see them either on Facebook. I don't see too much of that activity online every, now and then I do. And I do believe that that helps 'cause I see that with other organizations. They do have uh even a chat where they can try to collaborate with each other 'cause I'm part of that chat too with uh F, F, with the cats for the F T, F, F T R or F T N?
Oh, yeah. The, the T N R.
T N R, there you go. And so I know that. So what we can do is maybe chief, I don't know if it's a topic we can have on the agenda, maybe get volunteers and see who's willing to come and help.
There's a lot of different things, right? And I know, like, when I pulled Benny from the shelter and we posted him on our page, on the Second Chance page, um, we got like over a thousand uh shares. Uh, it was like ten thousand shares and views and posts. We had a bunch of people that wanted to take him in, but we couldn't send him anywhere because of his condition. So I was literally force-feeding him water and food for like two weeks so that, to make sure that he was gonna be okay. And the reason I pulled him too is because I really thought he was gonna die. I was like, he's not gonna make overnight. At least I'm gonna make him comfortable. Luckily, he survived. I took him to the vet the next morning. I know, Bertha knows, I'm like big on animals and I'm like, I'm gonna do it. You know, I just, and I had to carry him. He couldn't even walk. He's still now trying, like, you know, he has trouble. But just the shares and the common C exposure is, is super important. And I think that's one thing that your shelter is lacking because I don't see any communication.
Right. I think maybe you can start with um.
I can share some, some updates. So, yes, when uh I didn't meet uh Laura.
Lorena.
When I, I did meet with Laura, she expressed her concern. So I immediately looked into that. Uh, what we have done since then, and, and we're gonna share this with the community probably at the next council meeting, if not the one after that. But uh since then, we've had public works go out there and create a recreational walk area for, for the uh, the dogs that are there. And yes, they do need that socialization. And currently, we are working with the high school, uh, the Angero T C program and some of the other programs to get volunteers to come out. They just, there's a waiver that has to be signed though, 'cause there's a liability issue there.
Right.
So uh, we are scheduling that currently with our animal control officer to create that socialization and get that recreation for the, for the animals. So we did that. In addition to that, I just purchased a C train. The C train is specifically for puppies and animals that are injured that cannot endure the inclement weather of cold and, and extreme heat. And we just installed a heater and an air conditioner in that C train just last week. So right now, if those, if we pick up any puppies or, or dogs that are injured or vulnerable to the inclement weather, that's where we're gonna house them. And so it's a much safer and much more comfortable environment. We're gonna share that as soon as possible. Um, our animal control officer, who's been doing this on a part-time basis, because we lost our full-time officer, in order to get him to dedicate more time to that, we, we uh promoted him up to full-time. So now he's here five days a week instead of uh four hours a day, he's here eight hours a day. So there's more attention that's being uh divided to that uh, to that facility. The fact that we have enormous resources and we've always used, that, we've probably got a dozen resources. In the years past, we've been successful at adopting these, these dogs out. We have so much trouble adopting them this year. This year, all the facilities are filled, they're at capacity and they're asking us for help. So it is, and, and Laura was kind enough to, to provide me with another resource. We actually reached out to that resource in Keigsburg.
Oh, good.
Yeah, and, and they, they couldn't help us. Same thing. They said, we're at capacity.
They're all at capacity, but the other thing too, uh, Serta, and this is not to interrupt you because I think we need to just kinda like.
Okay.
Um, the other thing too is that there's organizations that are rescues that are out of the state. And one of the problems that, that Michelle has encountered is that they don't wanna take any of our dogs because when they did transport them out there, they died and they had parvo and some other, I don't know what else they had, but.
Temper.
Yes.
There's been other rescues that I know has pulled dogs from Parlier and unfortunately, they've died because of the condition. And But we can work together at least in these surrounding areas for with each other.
Exactly. So maybe that that's what you can do.
And we are, you know, there's there's a a chemical that we use for these diseases, parvo and what have you. So we're making sure that's being done.
Cleaning it up.
Another factor is that when we pick up these the strays, sometimes the strays already have, they already have it. So when we bring them in and they're not displaying the symptoms, we don't know that until until the symptoms actually come to to our our.
And this is where she's saying about the constant cleaning that will help reduce those chances. But I think it would be better just to have that committee and you can work with them and figure out.
No, no, sure. And Bambi's has helped us out tremendously in the past with especially with small dogs and puppies. She's been great with that. So we do rely on her for that and and so.
And I know you guys are doing your best. I I I I'm not gonna say you're not.
We're not neglecting it. I'll tell you that. We're doing what we can with the staffing and budget.
Is is there somebody else? Can you approach the?
Hi, my name is Eva. I'm a resident of Parlier and I just have a quick question. Um, as far as volunteers for the animal rescue, can the, um, adult offenders be part of that as part of their hours?
That's something that you can look into. I'm sure that they can because. Right. They're they're always gonna be supervised. So as long as um it's part of it, then that's something that maybe it you can work on as well, sorta.
Yeah.
Yeah, to just maintain it because it's gonna be hard for one person all the time. It's 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 it requires a lot of work. This is why those rescues have a lot of volunteers.
Oh, yeah, you have.
Yeah. So that's 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 a good suggestion, so. If not, then um I'm not, if there's another comment because I gotta move along.
I need to say something.
Then you can say it, but we need to move along. This is public comment.
Anyway, um Ms. Ben Court, I just thought I'd let you know that the community is worried about it. We had a uh a community member that went up there and probably introduced themselves the wrong language, that they wanted help to collaborate with the school and with the city. And Alma had made a call called or sent a message and told him to kick him out of there, to not to listen to him. He don't belong there. So I think you guys need to know that, okay? And if you need to know that person's name, I'll give it to you after the meeting.
Move on.
Excuse me, can you put it on the record that Alma's not letting me finish my comment? Excuse me, excuse me! Can you put it on the record that Alma's not letting me finish my comment? Okay, she's interrupting council.
There isn't any, then is there any public uh consent calendar that you'd like to pull at this time?
I was not gonna say anything, Mayor, but you need to respect your council.
Do what, Umberto? When I was in here, you never got up there and said a darn thing.
Because everybody respects, everybody respects each other, Mayor.
Because the hatred is so.
Very respectful and she let us pick.
Is there an item?
You want respect, respect us.
Uh, the consent calendar?
We interrupted a constituent to. Umberto.
The consent, is there a consent? To move on the consent calendar? Do you have a motion? Motion by Sabrina, do you have a second?
Second.
Second by Diego. All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries five yes. So thank you. Thank you for your concerns. They're valid concerns. So we can move on to the next item and the item is um, okay, consideration and necessary action on adoption. Thank you guys for taking the time, although it was not so pleasant at the end. So thank you very much. Um, consideration and necessary action on the resolution of twenty twenty-five dash one A, supporting and implementing timely use of funding. Javier Andrade, since he's not here, who's gonna present that?
Uh, I'll give you a brief on that.
Okay.
Mayor, council, and residents of Parlier, before you, a staff report recommendation supporting implementing timely use of funding. Staff recommends council adopt resolution twenty twenty-five supporting and implementing timely use of federal and state funding. Federal council of governments is soliciting application for funding through the Surface Transportation Block Grant Program, which funds transportation projects that improve air quality. Fresno COG has twenty-five million one hundred and eighty thousand six hundred and thirty-one in funding available for the regional program. This is another opportunity for the city to secure the funding to implement the active transportation projects, streets and improvements. One of the requirements to apply for this grant opportunity is for the city council of the city of Parlier to adopt a resolution supporting implementation, implementing timely use of federal and state funding. The requirement is set place to reduce the risk of the city's losing funds for the region. The funds are not used in a timely manner. They are lost. Therefore, funding, uh use it, use it or lose it. Fresno COG is requesting application for regional competitive program by March sixth. Uh, the recommendation is council approve uh moving forward.
So these are the funds that that I always constantly mention that part of the Fresno Council of Governments. And this is how we get all of our projects that we have currently in the city um approved. And I wanna thank their staff. They have done a fantastic job. All the mayors that support me and my city for uh making sure that these funds get approved. So if it wasn't for them, um this wouldn't be possible for us to get these funds. So I just wanna thank Robert and also uh Terry Ogle that are part of this um to making sure that we receive funds like these. It's very important and I've noticed a huge difference since the eleven years that I've been here that a lot of these projects are moving along. And it's and it comes with unity and it comes with support from all the other cities. So I wanna thank them for doing what they do. And if there's no other questions from the council, I can open it up to um Mr. Umberto that finally has something to say. But at the last meeting, he had nothing to say.
We start again, Mayor?
I watched the meeting.
All what I can tell you is that I'm thankful to the efforts that Mayor is doing. However, let me tell you that the money that we're getting, we contributing for those monies too, okay? We got a that uh measure C is until two thousand and twenty-seven and we've been contributing for twenty-seven years. So it's our money that they're giving us.
It's a resolution.
The mayor is in a position that she can't get more, that she can't get more. But she doesn't does anything to get more money for the council.
Can you put it on the record? She's not letting a constituent finish her speech, please, Alma. She's not letting him. Put it down.
Motion?
I'll motion to approve.
Motion from Sabrina, do you have a second?
Second.
Second from Janie. All those in favor?
Aye.
Roll call, please, because I didn't hear Kathy say a word. And and that doesn't go on the record. Only city business goes on the record. No, it does not.
The record is going to be that Mr. Umberto is very destructive in my council. And you can be, you can be removed. You can be removed.
So Serta, if he continues, I'm just informing you that you need to make sure that he is removed. This disruption is not gonna continue anymore. You allow it to continue every single meeting. The last meeting, you had nothing to say. Not a question, not a concern, nothing.
Mayor, let's move forward, please.
I am just gonna put this out there. You had nothing to say because you, all you come in here is to attack me. And everybody sees that because you are a machismo that doesn't like women in power.
Not on the agenda.
That is it. So roll call, please. Thank you very much. Roll call for item number three. Um, Mayor Alma Beltran.
Yes.
Uh, Mayor Pro Tem Sabrina Rodriguez. Councilmember Winita Molina.
Yes.
Councilmember Diego Garza.
Yes.
Councilmember Kathy Solario. Motion carries. Thank you very much. So now we can move on to the next item. The next item is um, consideration and necessary action on the resolution for twenty twenty-two twenty-five dash nineteen acknowledging the uh completion of the business uh assistance for the impacted of COVID-nineteen program funded through the Community Development Block Grant. So on this one, um you still continue to go ahead because I'm gonna bring those concerns publicly?
Yes, and and we do have another staff member here that can answer that question.
So my question on this uh block grant, because I know that there is businesses that actually applied for this, which was for, um, when Sonia was here, it was for um providing the funding to hire more employees. So when this actually took place, the business within few months shut down and another um business owner took over. The name changed as well. So do you have that information? Because um with that, being that it was only a few months after that, that is not allowable because you have to ha- keep those employees hired for an X amount of um, years. And the one that actually received the funding is not the current owner.
Uh, I would bring up our our other staff member to uh answer that question. Uh, that's kind of her role.
Is it okay for me to request an audit on that?
Well, right this moment, the presenters of this item should be allowed the time.
That that's fine. On top of that, I would like to also request an audit on the act, on the actual grant. Because I'm fully aware that, you know, these funds were for specific reasons because that is how it was addressed to the council at that time. And within few months, like I said, they sold the business and the one that received the funding is not the one that's the current owner now. So if you could please um work on auditing and then uh bring that back. We will go ahead and approve this as is. I'm sure the council is gonna wanna move on that. But I still would like to have an audit conducted.
I I suggest you speak with the city manager on this matter and the finance department um, outside because it's not on the agenda. It's not on the agenda for this evening.
It's still part of that.
Certainly, I I appreciate that.
It's a block grant that is still part of this item.
What's on the agenda is this particular closure.
Yeah, and that's why I'm asking for the audit, Megan, because it's, you're closing, you're closing a grant that is not in compliance. And I wanna make sure that we are in compliance because even though you say it's not, we're not just gonna approve a closure when I have those concerns. Those concerns need to come up. This is why I had asked Serta to not have it on the agenda so we could have discussed this in closed session. So this maybe wouldn't been out there and targeting businesses that shouldn't be discussed in public. But it was not done and I said to him that if you're not gonna remove it and you're gonna continue to bring this and put it on the record and put it in open ma- an open meeting, then I am going to speak on it in an open meeting because these are valid concerns. So even though you may say that it's not part of it, it is totally part of it. So go ahead and address what you need to address, but my my request would be.
Acknowledge your concerns and their valid concerns.
Would be that we do audit that.
I did ask, and and we can do the audit on it. I did ask the staff member who handles that portion of the grant to come forward and report that because according to her report, that the guidelines have been met. So that's what she wants to share. But we can continue and.
So then when did the guidelines change?
So she would, she she has to present that. I don't have that information.
They were never brought to council because let me tell you this. This is, I've been here eleven years and I know what was presented the first time. And I brought over thirty million to the city. So so um, this is why I asked to have this. But this, the guidelines never came back to us. So the guidelines do ha- if they change, this is what I know. If they change, they have to come back to the council for approval. Then they go to the state and the state has to also approve that. So I just wanna make sure that we are in full compliance. This is why I want you guys to audit. Because if once the state audits that and we are not in compliance, then we're forced to pay back all that money that was given out.
Okay, then I would defer to our staff member to provide that information.
Okay. Hi, I'm Eva Beltran. I'm the Grants Administrative Coordinator and I assisted um, the general manager and the finance director at the time when the program was running. Um, I gathered the information for them. Um, and so I'll go over a little bit about the program. Next slide, please. Okay, economic development related to COVID-nineteen businesses. Uh, the primary purpose of the the program is to benefit low and moderate income persons, households, neighborhoods, uh, and retaining low to moderate income jobs.
Question.
Um, on the next slide, please.
Kathy, you don't remove anyone. You don't have the authority.
She wants.
You don't have the authority to remove absolutely no one.
She doesn't let us here.
So the businesses that were assisted were these four businesses and uh they were assisted for these uh purposes. Uh, Kelly Snack Shack for payroll, utilities and equipment, Campesino Services, utility, mortgage and payroll, Delia's Fashion for rent and Lucky Donuts for rehabilitation. Next slide, please. Okay, so um program eligibility requirements, they had to be uh COVID-nineteen impacted. Um, assistance resulting in job retention and no duplication of benefits and they had to have their business as as of January twenty nineteen or before. So they had to be in business and it couldn't be a new business. Next. Okay, so their options for assistance was rent, payroll, um, improvements, equipment, mortgage. Um, the loans that were made with the program are forgivable if they meet all the requirements uh for within the forgiveness period of three months. So they all met, um, they provided the the receipts and everything of what the money was used for. So they were in compliance. They were all in compliance within those three months after um uh received uh funds. So I think that my answer.
No, I didn't because with my question, is this why I want an audit? Because when I had that conversation with the last city manager when that happened, he had sold his business. And it was during that time when he received the money. So my question is, we need to make sure that that is looked into just to make sure that we are.
They meet that three months requirement.
And that's what was never done. And this is why I was trying to have this discussion outside of a open meeting. But since it's on here, that's my request, is to make sure that we are in compliance with your team and Serta, that you guys just verify that it was done the way it's supposed to be done. Because once it gets to the state and then we're not in that compliance and they verify, then that's when we have to pay it back. Whatever was given out because the state will take those monies. They will take those monies back. Yes, because they will find us out of compliance.
Uh, the last page. And uh, this is the only rehab that uh we did with the assistance. And they had HVAC system put in, they had a re-roof and tile, uh re-tile the back um kitchen area.
Yeah, I I don't have any questions on those. It was just that one that I'm specifically talking about. I know that, you know, residents also had the utilities assistance program. That's not the question because we know that everybody at that time was needing assistance. It's just when the property was sold, when the business was sold, to verify. Because I don't want later on to be surprised, oh, well, the state, you know, is not gonna, well, was making us pay it back, pretty much.
And I believe at the time, um Sonia was the one uh doing that. So, you know, I don't have that information, but we can get that information.
That's why I would like for you guys just to verify, just to make sure because it's better to be ahead of it than later on, oh, everybody's scrambling to try to get the information and find out what happened. So this way, if it's if it's not in compliance, it would go back to what it says or he has to pay it back, not us.
Yes.
Okay.
Good evening, council and directors. I'm here to present two resolutions for the CDVG grant. One is the one that Eva was talking about. The other one is utility assistance. Um, part of the process when we complete our grant is to submit closer documentation that states what we did, how we did it. And then you guys acknowledging that we're completing the grant. This is a process that I'm doing. Aside from this process, then we can do an internal audit on how we follow the internal guidelines. But this is for the state so they can audit our grant and be done with the grant. So the two resolutions that I put together, one is for the um business assistance and the other one is for the utility assistance. Um, the agenda item number four, it's for the business assistance. This was given in November four twenty twenty-one and it was a hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars. Um, that's the one that Eva was just mentioning about it. And then we have another one that it was utility assistance for residents. This was given on June second twenty twenty-one for a hundred and eleven. And it was also to help with after COVID-nineteen.
Um, excuse me, Sandra. And five?
No, this is. No, this is four and then five. I'm sorry. Four and five, yeah. Of course. Okay, so four, one is four, it's the utility assistance. So this is the one on November four twenty twenty one, we're done. Um the last business that we assisted was Lucky Donuts in twenty twenty-three.
I don't have any question. My questions were the ones that I I had previously asked.
Okay.
For number four.
Yes.
For the business one.
Right.
Okay. No, we're gonna do, we're gonna, we have to float separately.
Yeah. So if there, is there any question?
You um you stated your concern, so I think that's.
Anybody else? Hearing none. Any from the public? Okay, hearing none, so we can move on. And um so then the resolution number agreement, which one is it?
Twenty twenty-five nineteen.
Nineteen. Okay. I don't know because you guys were saying four and five.
I know.
I did the item, I'm sorry.
Where's the four and five? I don't see four and five. Okay. Oh, four and five, the item number four and five. I'm sorry, okay. Because I'm like, wait, it's twenty twenty-five, okay.
Number four.
So uh do we have a uh
Motion.
Motion to approve resolution twenty-five dash nineteen. Diego motion and we have a second from all those in favor?
Aye.
Five yes. Okay, so we can move on to the next item and that is uh approve resolution.
Okay. Now number five. I was trying to do them together.
Well, since you already brought both of them, so we do resolution number twenty twenty dash twenty-five dash twenty.
Twenty.
So who uh make the motion? Is she, oh, no, she already.
She did, right?
Yeah, I kinda combined them because they're they're together, but they're separate.
Vote on it separately, yes.
And same thing, we can do a presentation on the utility assistance if you guys need an audit. Um both of these grants are gonna be included in the audit for twenty-three, twenty-four.
Yeah, and I don't think the questions is is with the residents because they already had to go through that program and every cities were offering. The only question was the one that gets money for something that's not utilities, it's more for payroll and retaining employees. That's my concern. Okay.
I have a motion.
Motion from Sabrina and second from Diego. All those in favor?
Aye.
And motion carries five yes. Okay.
Thank you.
Uh thank you. So an item number um six. Consideration and necessary action on adopting the ordinance relating to small municipal separation, separate storm water sewer system presented by Alfonso?
Unfortunately, he's not here, so I'll have to uh, I'll have to share with you what I know of it.
You know, whenever um and and not, okay. I would like for him to be here more often because there's times that he's not here and questions do come up. Um you've seen that with our TCP projects and he's hasn't been able to come and I I don't know, was he notified in time? Oh, did he give a reason why he couldn't make it? But I think he should, since it's his project, he needs to be here. Because Javier is our city engineer, but we're paying Alfonso to do this work.
I will let him know to be present uh the next time.
Yes, I just, just because that makes it better for if there's questions, he can answer them. Okay, thank you. Go ahead.
Does this item, is it um important that we need to pass it right now?
No, we're not tabling it.
Oh, I was just saying because you wanted him to be here.
No, 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 no. I never said to table. I said for future, like he he needs to be here because he's done this multiple times. And not, and not, I I I understand if there's things that come up, but but he still needs to be here for questions. Okay, go ahead.
So uh mayor, council members, residents of Parlear, before you use a staff report, it's recommendation to adopt an ordinance relating to small municipal separate storm sewer system. It recommends a city council waive all full reading and r- reading and introduce the ordinance. The new chapter thirteen point eight zero to title thirteen of the Parler Municipal Code relating to urban storm water quality management. Title thirteen, chapter thirteen point eight O of the City of Parler Municipal Code pertains to the city's urban storm water quality management. The proposed ordinance update provides the city of the Parler, City of Parler with the legal authority to control pollutants discharged into the city's public storm water system as required by the State of California Water Resources Control Board. Uh there's a little background there, but in in general, the discussion as a city is required by the state Water Resource Control Board to comply with the city's MS four general permit. The order requires the city to obtain adequate legal authority, which is accomplished through the attached ordinance. And it's a recommendation to pass an ordinance.
Okay, and that's waiving the first, right, reading?
Uh yes, to waive the first reading.
Is there any question? Any from the public? All those in favor, I mean, any motion from Sabrina and Diego, all those in favor?
Aye.
Five yes. Okay, we want to the next item. And that is um uh resolution for um number twenty twenty-five dash twenty-one. That says twenty-one up here, so this is twenty-one as well because it's ordinance. I don't see. What's the ordinance number for the one that we just approved? It didn't have a number. You know, for the future, if you guys can put the the number would be good. Because what's happened in the past is that we get a um, sometimes we get duplicates and we need to make sure that that's the correct one. So that was ordinance number twenty twenty-five zero two? Okay. And now this one is resolution number twenty twenty-five zero twenty dash twenty-one uh regarding industrial re- um retirement for police officer Charles Bolding. Oh.
Sorry, I was talking to Megan. Um yes, this is um just a disability retirement for one of our for uh officers. And this is just a requirement that's required by pers. It's part of the process.
My my question is that normally um those things go into closed session first and then it comes out here. That's how LaZano Smith has done it in the past from one of the um situations that we've had like similar to this. So I'm not understanding why that process wasn't followed.
It can go either way. It's by statute. It's uh even though it it's a personnel matter, it's mandated by statute as to the process. There's no anticipated liability. And it's 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 not really discretionary either because we're following through with the legal requirements of the resolution that um are is required by pers, by Calpers.
I I understand that.
So if you prefer it to go through closed session?
No, uh it's over, it's already done, so it's 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 on here. But but it would be, I would rather have that same procedure we've always had. Because if there's any question that one of us may have, since it's personnel, you don't wanna do it in an open meeting.
Of course, and I I asked about that, but uh it's been handled both ways in the past.
Since I've been here, it's always been first closed session and then it comes back. So I I would just rather it still be that way. In case there is any questions, um council.
I'll work with your city clerk and make sure it happens that way.
Thank you very much. Okay, any questions? Any? I don't have none. So any from the public? Oh, hearing none. So we have a uh a motion for a resolution twenty twenty-five dash twenty-one. So Diego and Sabrina. All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries five yes. Okay. All right. I guess we got through everything already. So did I skip it?
Before we go into closed session, may we take five minutes or or so for a recess?
Yeah, we can. Let's just do the uh council comments first and then we'll we'll do that.
Thank you very much.
Okay.
Yes, uh once again, I I just wanna thank uh all my staff and uh all the the, all the departments, the recreation department doing a fantastic job with with the basketball league. And yes, we do wanna help um, you know, the volunteers and resources for our animal control. Uh yes, we're always looking for volunteers. So if you're interested, uh yeah, reach out to uh to me at City Hall or at the police department um as well as, you know, some of these programs that they're bringing. And that was uh, that was really exciting news to hear with the soccer team and they're doing a fantastic job. So I I'm sorry, softball. Uh doing an amazing job out there, but uh we can always, you know, it's just, you know, that that passion and that effort goes a long way and it sends it sends a a deep uh message in our heart. So we appreciate all of them. And I just wanna thank everybody for their for their help and our new finance director that's gonna help us continue on on the right path.
I just also wanna thank all the different agencies that we have out there, all the uh all the sports teams that we have out there, all these programs for our children to keep them entertained, to keep them going while they're not in school. They have goals. A lot of them are very active, so that's, all these programs are really good. I'm glad for the softball team. Hopefully, we can get uh the park, um the baseball field fixed for them and and for the other ones. Thank you, Bertha. And for, because we we have a lot of teams that, different uh programs that use our fields, so that's a good one. Um wanna thank again Javier and everybody that was involved with the floors field, doing our storm drainage. We had a ribbon cutting, it was really nice. I I love the the sidewalk that they're using, the the cement. What's it called?
Horus. Horus.
Horus cement. Really great. The water doesn't puddle no more. It just goes back into our earth, so that's really cool. Um I wanna thank uh Eva Beltran, our city uh our community uh event coordinator for the city. Cynthia from the senior center and all our seniors. We had a senior event today. Uh was really good turnout. They loved it. We had raffles, uh coffee cookies. They had a lot of information. We had like fourteen booths that came and gave information, not just for our seniors, but for their caregivers. Uh knowing how hard it is to be a caregiver to your loved ones, sometimes there's nobody there to help you. So um they had a lot of information. Wanna thank everybody that was there. Um we're planning another event, hopefully by September for our seniors. So we just wanna keep them going and um appreciate everybody that was, that helped us with it. Thank you.
Um I just wanna um say thank you to Javier and his team, um our city staff for the drainage system that was complete, the ribbon cutting. That was really nice. Um seeing that little playground right there, it's just a little addition to that area. Um I can't wait till they finish the final touches where it's actually a field again. Um what, I I don't believe what it was gonna be called now, the floors, is it the basin? The flo- floors basin? Floors field basin, okay.
The ba-
It's still gonna have the same other
As it was before.
Fields there. It's just, they needed to make it deeper for the the
Store, yeah. Um I'm excited for that. Um Richard Flores was a cousin of mine and uh it's really important that we do keep those names on our areas that we've already dedicated. Um I'm excited for the family to come out again and um and uh see the new, the upgrades to that field. Um I wanna say thank you to city staff, the city dinner I attended. Um it was nice to see those who went out and um and kinda just enjoy- enjoyed each other's company, ate some good food, had a few raffles. It was really nice. Um I just wanted to ask too, is there a date for the Easter um event? If not, if we could get that sent out really soon?
There is a day, I just don't have it, Eva had it.
Okay, yeah, I I then I figured I should have asked her. Um but again, if we can get that out just so that everybody knows what date it is. Um I would like to thank the recreation staff, um Rachel, she's doing a great job with the basketball um league. I think the kids are really excited, parents are excited. Um they get a big crowd out there. Um and I'm just excited to see those um youth groups, youth, you know, uh events for the kids um at a younger age. Um you just develop those skills earlier rather than just junior high or elementary, fifth, sixth grade. Um but again, this, the softball league that started up, um it is a travel team. Um I love that it's providing something for everybody around our our area. Um but I I'd like to focus on our Parlier kids staying in Parlier um and developing those kids to stay here. Um but again, thank you. It's it's a lot of work, a lot of dedication to those volunteers and, you know, they don't get paid. And they just ask for minimal stuff and, you know, sometimes we can help out as much as we can. Um but again, thank you. Thank you, city staff. Um I just had a couple of things to add, Chief, if um I know um mayor requested the an audit on those COVID funds, um well, that one grant. Um if like, if we can look into those, uh do an internal um uh audit on the, any of the COVID funds during that twenty nineteen, twenty twenty-one era. Um because she has valid points, um but there's also other ones that need to be looked into as well. Um and I I'll be more than happy to get together with you guys just to, a little more what um I have seen and noticed, my concerns. Um again, I'd also like to make sure, um to request an audit on the community development department. I know we've brought it up before, but I'd just like to put it on the record that I would like to um request an audit in the community development department. Um so if we can get that done soon and or start working on it, um that'd be great. Also, um the flooding in the community center. I got a few phone calls and text messages this weekend when I, when I was out of town. Um can we get what was spent on that? We know it was spent on the floor to redo, which is a total disaster now because it got wet. Um what, did we spend anything for the roof? So again, it was brought up before by um mi- uh council member Solorio. It made no sense to fix the floor before you fix the roof. So now we're, we're seeing those effects and we ruined a floor that was somewhat complete. Um because it wasn't completely done correctly. Um but we paid like fifty thousand for that floor. And um now it's just another sore.
What I do know that they did do on the roof and maybe, and maybe you can look into it, Chief, is that Public Works did work on, I'm not sure if if at that time we had um either Jeff or was it Phil? Because this was back before even Ha- Javier was here with the roof issues. Um can you stop? So it, so do you know if it was involving um with 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 the actual um roof, if you knew anything about it? I know that there was conversations about that because they did put some kind of, I don't know what it was, up in the top because to repair it was gonna be over a hundred thousand dollars, correct?
I I was not involved in that, but I, during staff meetings, the previous, Phil Romero, the previous city engineer, would talk about it with the city management at the time. And I know that they were talking about some stopgap solutions because of the cost. I don't know what was implemented, um if.
I remember that was being implemented. That's why I, maybe if you guys can look into what was actually done so she can know what happened. Because the reason why we didn't have the funding for that, it was over a hundred thousand dollars. Because it's not an easy fix. You have to do the whole entire roof all over again and it's not and it, even now, it might not even be a hundred thousand, maybe two hundred thousand or more. So I know that that was one of the reasons that they were doing that, like minor um repairs, correct?
Uh again, I was not involved in that, other than just to overhear parts of it, but I do remember there were conversations and I and I.
I do recall. Okay.
Yeah, but I think she's, her question is more what happened, right?
What was, I know it was, it was already done, like what we already spent on that. I mean, if it could have been, I mean, I, again, I would have done the fifty thousand toward the roof instead of the floor. But I, and again, I don't know, I know it was budgeted, we did approve it, it was in the budget. Um but
The floor, yeah.
For the flooring. But again, if we knew we needed the roof fixed, like I, again, that's just my personal opinion. Um and it was brought up back then, but I just wanna know, I'm sure it was just patchwork. So we're gonna keep having these floods. And my other thing was the restroom in here. It's like you have to swim to get to the, to the facility.
And, and those, those are fundings that maybe staff can look into for repairs on those air, on those areas because you need it for the restroom. It, it's not, it's not an easy fix.
No, I, I
The fifty thousand would have never done anything for that roof. That's what was already spent already on the minor repairs, was fifty thousand. So, that was something that was recommended by the last engineer that, that said, okay, this can help and, and, and maybe prolong us till when we do have the funding. So this wa, this is why that city manager took that action because that's all that was pretty much she was able to do. So it wasn't like, okay, we didn't do nothing and we just did the floor.
So that's why I just kinda want to see what, what was spent on it already. Um, it, it just because now it's gonna cost us a little bit more because we're gonna have to do, we're gonna have to do the, the roof and the floor. So, again, I, um, again, my thinking is different, but I just want to know, you know, what's gonna be our plan? Do we have a plan? Are we gonna, you know, start looking into, I'm, I mean, money of course is gonna be one wish, one issue. But if we can work on that, because that's a rented facility.
Okay, council member and mayor, would you like to direct your city manager to, uh,
Look into it.
Look into it and then look forward and get back to the council.
Yes, thank you.
Obviously there are serious concerns, but he's the one that can get things started.
Yes, thank you.
Okay, that's it.
Thank you.
I'll keep mine short for everyone. Um, I just want to say thank you to everyone in the city who's contributing to our town. Um, welcome aboard our finance director and I'll just keep it short and sweet. Thank you to everyone.
Again, I want to welcome Myra Tour. Work, please. Like I said, stand strong, very strong. And another thing about the community center floor, Sabrina, thank you for bringing it up, yes. With those fifty thousand dollars, we could have repaired and patched that roof. That would be more important than putting a floor. And I brought that up, but Alma posted it up there on a Sunday. Did she, we hired a, uh, a crew of two, I think? And fifty thousand dollars instead of using it for the roof. Right after that, it started raining and I was out there myself, putting buckets to protect the floor. Because that was her decision, the floor instead of the, the, the roof. If it would have been my house, I would have done the roof first and then the floor. But you gotta know how to run business if you're gonna take care of business. And the other thing is that, we all know in our last meeting, it was wonderful. Nobody fought, nobody, you didn't hear my name ten times. Everything was done smooth and calmly. And we were done early. We didn't have to hear stories. We got to our job, did our approving of what we didn't approve or what we approved. It was so smooth. Here we go again with the same thing, hearing my name, fighting with the constituents. I mean, this is horrible. Chief, I'm sorry you get through that too because you do an excellent job. I'll tell you that right now. You do, chief. You know, you really do an outstanding job. And with Bertha by your side. Sandra, I want to thank you for what you've done for us, cause you really cleaned up a mess that Alma and her friends and whatever we're working with, you did it with whoever you had, but you did it. Now we can read the budget book. And other than that, I want to thank everybody, okay?
Jeff, you have anything to say?
Uh, no, we'll probably talk to council member Rodriguez offline about her request.
Okay, okay. All right, so now I can move on to mine, um, with all that rhetoric.
What about those two?
So, because there, this is council, so I was attending, I didn't get to attend the last, um, meeting because of the fact that the sister city of Parlier is Encenada and I was invited to be part of the, um, the event, which Encenada has their first female mayor there. And it was an honor and a pleasure to be there with her. She was able to come here. Prior to me being there, she came here and was with, uh, Jerry Dyer. And, um, Jerry Dyer gave her a Mid Valley disposal trash truck for her community, which is amazing. I'm glad that they also collaborated with her and, and gave her something and that she told me that she's gonna have to figure out how she's gonna bring it to Encenada, cause it's a long distance. So, um, I was honored to be there with a lot of people that were from out, throughout the state. We had, uh, representatives from China, we had representatives from Spain that were also sister cities to, um, Encenada. So that's one of the thing of, of being part of not just California, but other, these other countries that, you know, are working and collaborating with Mexico and, and also with the state, you know, with California. That was amazing for me to be part of that. Um, I really enjoyed that, um, meeting with them. Uh, I did, you know, get invited and it didn't cost the city a dime because they always want to worry here, and not everybody, uh, about how it's gonna get paid because they don't care to represent the city. Um, the flooding project, one of the things that I want to thank is Trinidad Pimentel, uh, former council member that was part of this, um, entire project, which was, uh, approved by, um, the last council, Diane Maldonado as well. And, um, Javier was the one that did the, um, the application for these fundings and was, was part of the, again, it all comes from federal and state funding and the only way you get these funds is to, uh, represent your city, collaborate with the other agencies, work with federal and state. It's not just a application that goes through their desk and boom, Parlier is selected. It doesn't work that way. Um, there's thousands of, uh, applications that go through their desk, so they read them all. They all have a need. But when you have representation from your community, this is why I always say, I like to always go through all these, um, um, conferences and just be, be in the voice for Fresno County, for the city of Parlier. Now I'm going to be representing the, uh, Valley Voice, which for, is for the San Joaquin Valley. It's important to do those things because once they see that Parlier is representing, they remember that. And when they see applications that do come through their desk, they are going to remember the, um, reasons why Parlier should stand out more from all the other, uh, applicants. Because there's so many applicants that they do just scoring and that's what they do. And when you have, uh, collaboration with them and, um, you communicate with them and meet with them yearly, that is what helps these projects because over thirty million has come to this city. And I know that Kathy always says, well, Sonia applied, well, anyone can apply. Any staff member can put an application together. Javier does the applications now. The flood project was Javier who did it. So, these changes happened from eleven years ago till today, because prior to that, nothing was happening. All these projects, the flooding project, the downtown, the, the, um, Fig Tree Park, which you were part of as well. Um, Fig Tree Park, our, our park that's gonna be on the west side, you know, our roundabout that I also heard a complaint about. The roundabout, people are upset because how is that gonna work? A roundabout is something that, that Javier put together for safety purposes for the kids that are walking to school. Thing, people think, eh, they did the study, it was a two-year, three, actual three-year process. And the only reason it hasn't been done right now is because he's waiting for the school to be out. Once the school's out, there's not gonna be that congestedness on downtown. So this way, when the schools are not going to, the students are not going to school, he can work on downtown and it's gonna have an area where the kids are gonna go through and traffic goes through. So this is, right now, it's a lot more dangerous when kids are walking in front of a vehicle and somebody doesn't pay attention and hits the kid. So this is why it was important for us to do that. We were trying to mitigate the, uh, congestedness in that area. That is why in other cities, you see those projects of a roundabout being done in, in cities like Reedley, UCM, and, um, Kerman. They're, they're putting them almost in every city because it is, there's studies that show that is the safest route, that keeps the flow of traffic going and keeps pedestrians out of the way of traffic. So that's one of the things that I wanted to do, to say. Now, on the DC trip, um, Javier's not here, but his, uh, his staff, one of his staff members is gonna go with me to the DC trip to, to speak on behalf of our educational trail and also the headlight, pedestrian headlight that we're going to push for on Manning across from the, um, what's the apartments, the Salendini, Salendini Apartments, so that we can have another area for the kids to cross. Again, these are things that are for Parlier, but I want to thank the staff from the COG because they are the ones that are actually funding everything for Parlier because Parlier is not wanting to fund anything. They, um, some will make an issue about my per diem. They talk about per diems. Per diem and a reimbursement are two different things. So a reimbursement is getting reimbursed, which you already expend, spend on. Our, our policy is that we get a, uh, per diem. Uh, reimbursement is not part of our policy. But because I'm going, that's an issue that they don't want me to use a per diem, which I already had said and I told Bertha, I'm not gonna debate this anymore. I am just gonna go let COG pay for everything. COG does not represent the city of Parlier. I do. And, and I'm getting paid, uh, well, not paid, actually, COG is paying for my hotel, my flight and my meals. When the city is refusing to pay for it. So this is where people need to understand, what do you want? Do you want someone that's gonna work with me to bring these funds to the city or just work against it? Because let's ask what the person has done for her con, her constituents. Absolutely nothing. All she's done is argue up here and point me out every single time. So that is the DC trip and I'm, I look forward to working with Javier's, uh, staff member. And, uh, unfortunately you weren't able to go, but, um, he's gonna be there representing the city of Parlier at, with me um, to, to speak on these, um, fundings, which is ten million for the educational trail. And we're going to ask for a million for a, um, it's a budget, um, it's, it's for the pedestrians, cause I think of about safety, Kathy, you only, you're so obsessed with me all the time, always thinking about what you can say negatively about me and instead of just focusing on your constituents.
That's not a agenda.
I want to, uh, make sure that the kids that cross that main, uh, thoroughfare safely, because there is kids, parents that have their little ones that cross that, uh, Manning. So one of my residents actually emailed me and concerns with that. So this is why I asked Javier, let's put something together. We'll talk to, um, our representatives and, and, uh, at the federal government to get a, a year mark uh, funding of a million. And, um, the other thing is that, uh, unfortunately I wasn't able to attend the, uh, employee dinner. It was scheduled on the time that I actually, uh, run my meetings at the Fresno Council of Governments, which is all these fundings that I keep talking about that Javier brings up. Every time he brings up these applications, it's because it's when I'm running the meetings and the council, the, the board that's there that supports me and the, the city to get these, uh, items approved. And I, that's why I want to thank Javier and the board for supporting me in all these efforts, bringing these fundings to the city. Um, the other thing is the, um, uh, audit. Um, I know that, um, I want to make sure that we always keep talking about, oh, we need to be in compliance and they're, they're behind, they're behind. It's not the auditors that are behind. We have to understand that our staff is the ones that are behind. And I'm sorry that you come into something like that, that you're gonna have to endure. But with your help, maybe with your guidance, you can, we can get this straightened out. Um, because the auditors can't do fixing our issues with internal issues and then come in audit what they fixed. That's borderline problematic. So, this is why they mentioned it several times, that they cannot be doing those things. Um, I did speak to some of the auditors and their concerns as to what's going on internally and that, now that you're, this is before you came in. So now that you're there, um, hopefully we can get that straightened out and they don't have to wait for us to fix those internal issues because that's the delay. That is the real delay. The delay is that they're waiting on us to fix the problems so they can come in and audit. So, the, the Fresno Council of Government, it actually came from Fres, uh, the Fresno, uh, County Authority, Transportation Authority. Terry Ogle sent an email and I wanted to share that with, um, with, um, Sabrina. And it goes over, and I'll send it over to you as well, it goes over being in compliance with our audits. And if we're not in compliance, this, the, the Fresno County, uh, Transportation Authority cannot, um, fund any more projects. Because that is part of the federal and state regulations that we have, that all cities must be in compliance. And there's several cities, not just, um, Parlier, you know, because the lack of always having these, um, auditors that audit municipalities, cause it's not just like any auditor, it has to be the ones that are experienced with municipalities. So, um, if we're, once we're in compliance, then we can continue to receive. But I just want to make sure that you understand that that's a letter that already was sent today. It was forwarded to myself and, um, Serta, so. If there's any questions, you, you know, I did ask you if you want to, uh, join me with one of the meetings for the Fresno Council of Governments. That way you can build that relationship with them and you guys can communicate on what you need to do to make sure that we're always in compliance. Also with Terry Ogle, he's the one for Fresno County Transportation Authority and, and those are in the morning. So that would be during your work hours. I would, I can send you the schedule. It would be in the morning for the Fresno County, uh, Transportation Authority. And then the other one would be on March, at the end of the month, March, um, let me see. It's a Thursday, so that would be the twenty-seventh at five thirty. So you can just, I'll send you the location, I, cause I usually, I'm there before the meeting starts with the, the staff and the legal counsel there. Um, so if you want, you can join us, so that way you can start building the relationship with all of them. Um, but that's all, I, um, just want to make sure that we, we start making sure now that you're here. I know it's a lot. I, I, um, you know, I'm gonna let Robert know that you're here and, and to just, you know, to be more of a guidance and help you out.
And I did reach out to Robert already. Um, so, um, and I would love to attend any meetings. I am working with chief and the staff um, to get all these internal audits going, so. I was made aware of the whole situation prior to taking the position, so that's definitely something I will tackle.
Yes, thank you. And I'm glad that you reached out to him, cause I, when we had that conversation, I was suggesting for you to do that and I did mention it to Robert, that you would probably be contacting him soon. And that way he knows that it was, cause he was asking me too, like, ooh, why is she gonna contact me? What's going on? No, I said, no, don't worry. It's nothing, it's just that she wants to work with you and on these issues that we are, we currently have. And he said, oh, okay. So that was good. Um, and I, I appreciate, so that would be another, if you'd like to go. I'm not gonna force you to go to something that you don't feel that you need to. That's just an option there for you if you'd like to go.
Yeah, no, I would definitely join you. The, the more people I get to know, the better.
All right, thank you so much. Um, I just also wanted to, uh, say something in regards to a young man. Stop. There's a young man who lost his life recently. It was really close to me. He was his, my son's, Davian's best friend. He was leaving work and on his way home from work. He was a good kid, never into trouble. Very obedient, real responsible. That lost his life on, I believe it was Monday. Alejandro Ortega Junior. And I just want to give my condolences to the family, to his friends for, you know, joining the family in this time of need. I know it's, it's hard because I think of my son. He was the same age as my son and they worked together. And I know how much my son and them were really, really close. And I just want to send, send my condolences to the family and let them know and his friends that whatever they need from me, I will be there. And that I, I hope he's resting in peace and that he never is forgotten. Because there has been things that were said on social media that are not accurate and that's what was upsetting to me. When the so, when media takes a report and doesn't get all the facts and just runs with the first thing that's said, because there was two things that were said. One was that he was speeding, which he was not a kid to do that. He was not a, he, he was not a person that was irresponsible or reckless.
He was not a, he was not a person that was irresponsible or reckless out there. He was a very responsible kid. Then they said that he fell asleep at the wheel. They all got off at 10:30. The sad thing about it is that when he wrecked, nobody saw him until 6 o'clock in the morning. And if it's hard for me to even talk about it, I can't even imagine what his mom is thinking. So I just wanted to bring that out because it's important to me to share with the community that he was not an irresponsible child. He was not a reckless person and he was not speeding. I believe that maybe somebody cut him off where he hit that brick pillar. You know, the pillar out there on 99. That's what I think. That's what my heart tells me because he was not nowhere, that kind of a person to be irresponsible and jeopardize anybody else out there. So I just wanted to share that. I felt it was important to share that people know that it's not what is being said on the news. And I hope that once they are done with this investigation, that they bring out the real truth. Because there's a lot of people that are driving recklessly out there and cause accidents and flee. We know that. So I just wanted to share that, that he was not a reckless person. He was a good kid. And anybody that knows him knows that what I'm saying is true. So with that, would you like to go over the closed session? Thank you.
Closed session is as follows. Item eight, conference with legal counsel, anticipated litigation, one case pursuant to government code section 54956.9. Item nine, conference with legal counsel, existing litigation, city of Parler versus Sarbat Bala, pursuant to government code section 54956.9. Item number 10, conference with legal counsel, existing litigation, Torres versus city of Parler, pursuant to government code section 54956.9. Item number 11, conference with legal counsel, existing litigation, Element VII versus city of Parler, government code section 54956.9. And item number 12, public employee employment title, acting finance director, pursuant to government code section 54957. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. We'll take a five-minute break.
That'd be great, thank you.
Okay, we're back from closed session. Thank you for waiting. Megan, can you please report out? Can you make sure your mic is on too? Thank you.
There's only one item to report out and that's on item number 12. There was a motion to deny the request to the senior revenue manager the 10% raise from April through December of '23, and 10% from January through December of '24. And the motion passed by a 3-2 vote, so the motion to deny the request passes and there that is denied and there's nothing more to...
I just want to say it was a roll call vote?
Yes, it was a roll call vote and the vote was recorded by the city clerk.
Yes, it was three, which is Diego, myself, and Sabrina voted no. Kathy and Janie voted yes. Thank you.
The mayor voted yes.
Sorry.
She's so excited she don't remember.
Diego voted yes. And council member Solorio voted no. And council member Molina voted no.
Yes, thank you for correction.
Nothing more to report.
Thank you so much. Meeting adjourned.